I will call the October 11th Cedar Springs School Board meeting to order at 6:45. And if you will rise and join us with the. Trustee Bowser, here. Trustee Revard.
Here.
Trustee Vanderhyde.
Yeah.
Treasurer Dilmore.
Here.
Secretary Slager, here. Vice President Schaffner.
Here.
President Ray.
Here.
Thank you, and we've established a forum. We'll move on to the adoption of the agenda, and I would entertain a motion for as presented. So, support and discussion. Having none, Vice President Schaffner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Dilmore.
Yes.
Justin Vanderhyde.
Yes.
Justin Revard.
Yes.
Justin Bowser.
Yes.
President Ray. Yes, the agenda is adopted as presented. And that brings us to gratitude. Let's start with sharing gratitude. I'll start with, my daughter's a freshman, and the homecoming dance was fantastic, and she actually really enjoyed it outside. She said it was like, it was, it was really, really fun, and the setup was amazing, and it just, every, it was really easy to get in with your ticket and everything like that. So I just really appreciate being proactive, and we had it outside, and it turned out absolutely beautiful. Well, in the hallways, I did judge the hallways.
Oh, yes.
And those channels are very talented. I've seen them. I know my daughter's a freshman, but seniors, wow, do they knock out the park, and they're all smart. They pick movies that we would all understand, like The Notebook, and Chucky, and things like that, and it was, I was pretty impressed. We got some talented kids. And the seniors ended up doing, I mean, everything. Oh, alright. Anything else?
Fun weekends. My daughter is also a senior. She had a whole summer. Going, we sent her some back, it was awesome. A great time, since you didn't come out, a good dance play, that was awesome. Powerball was great. Seems like a whole house somewhere. It was really big. That's who we'd be thankful for.
Thank you for the energy, whoops, the red hat, who's the red hat parade?
And one thing to share, I'm very grateful for Nolan Russo. Nolan is a sophomore at Cedar Springs High School, and he is a Boy Scout. He's in the process of earning his Eagle Scout. Award, and he did a service project by installing a sandbox over the early childhood playground, or GSR, GSRP playground over the weekend. And so, grateful that there are people like Nolan who see an opportunity and see a need and make a difference in his community. So, grateful for that.
Okay, we will move on, and next we have our high school representatives, and we have Lily Calhoun, and May are here to share with us. And you want to go?
They're not. Okay, they can speak up, or they can get back, whichever's.
Good evening. So, the homecoming decorating went really well. A lot of people not helped. I know for the junior council, which I'm a part of, we had at least 15 helpers to help us with decorations. Seniors were first, runners-up being sophomores, and it's also very organized and orderly, so we, between our three ladders, we're able to share, and so, there weren't like any misunderstandings. And then for our spirit days, we had, I woke up like this, which is basically our PJ day, and then anything but a backpack, and little kids versus senior citizens, and flash colors. And the participation felt was a lot better than I expected. I know around the schools and stuff, there's a lot of, had fun with anything but backpack, so. And over Lily.
I'm Lily Calhoun. I'm the senior class vice president this year, and then I'm going to talk about our family assembly and our house and dance. So for our assembly, Jay Yawes is our executive president of our whole student council, did a very good job planning it. We have lots of activities and lots of school spirit, and then Sister Polka, one of our teachers and our football coach, had a nice top top, and editor of prayer for the whole committee, which is really nice. And then for our dance, the senior class council was responsible for planning it. We decorated their morning, and the dance turned out really well, the weather was perfect, and everyone played their part, had a really good time. There were lots of activities, everything was good, music was good, everyone had a great time, so it was gonna be good.
Thank you. Thank you. Interactions were very nice. Did a drive.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to our consent items, and I would entertain a motion for as presented. So, support, Vice President Schaffner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Dilmore.
Yes.
Justin Vanderhyde.
Yes.
Justin Revard.
Yes.
Justin Bowser.
Yes.
President Ray. Yes, the consent items are approved as presented. That brings us to discussion item A, and we have financial update.
Find something new this week, which is the TV screen, as we work into our meetings here. So, as usual, we've got our year-to-date general ledger update in the board book, the building and site sinking fund budget update is in there as well, so you can see those cedar trails and middle school projects, the final expenditures are coming through now, for that work that was done in the summer. Obviously, not much of a year-to-date general fund, as we've just kind of started there, so. And then, of course, if anybody has any questions about any of the other things under extras, please reach out to discuss. So, real brief tonight, just a quick financial update, there's three things that I want to touch base on from Lansing. First one is Senate Bill 618, which looks like it's going to go through. You may recall, over the last several years, we've done a refund, where we've refunded our school bond home fund principal in order to get a lower interest rate. And the reason is because they've had that fixed 3% interest rate for years and years and years. Well, finally, this bill is recognizing that districts are doing this, and it's a lot of rigmarole, and obviously money out of the school bond home fund. So, this bill would make it so that the school bond revolving fund is at the market interest rate. So districts like us wouldn't have to refinance our local fund debt in order to, you know, capture some of those savings. So that's what it is. I actually changed the next one, because it changed, I received notice on Friday, after the board book had already been sent out. The US Department of Defense actually did approve the state's SR3 plan late last week. So, that means that all of our SR3 funds will be released. Equalization payment has been approved, and so we'll be seeing that in the coming months, and Jen and I, and actually many of us will be working on our SR3 plan, because that's quite a bit of money that we will be spending over the next few years. So, that'll be shared in detail moving forward. The equalization payment, if you recall, I mentioned this before, it's about $1.1 million in the equalization fund alone. So, 2.8 in SR3, another 1.8, or excuse me, 1.1 coming through on the equalization payment. So, quite a bit, about 3.8 million that we'll have to spend on a list of approved things over the next two years or so. So more to come on that. And then, just the last thing, the House Fiscal Agency and Senate Fiscal Agency both released August numbers that were, once again, way, way ahead of where estimates were, and I didn't go through the details of it, but. Continue to be great news out of Lansing, school aid funds, you know, obviously we've got that very, very large, almost $600 per people increase for this year, if things continue to trend where they're at, you could be seeing that. As schools have been underfunded, under the general fund for twice over time. I'm kind of jumping the gun on this one. My next action, I think, the topic of the discussion is the summer tax resolution. I just threw it on here because this is an annual resolution that we pass every year. It actually doesn't have to be done until December, but I like to give it out in October, there's just plenty of time. We have to send it off to our local municipalities. Basically, this is just the board's approval of the tax resolution, that 100% of all taxes are leveled. So no change there, that's just something that's also in discussion, so I'll just copy this as our discussion. Obviously, that resolution, same thing from year to year, is attached to the board book, and that'll be up for action on the 25th of March. So if you have any questions there, please can reach out. This is hard to see on this small screen, but this is, I'm gonna roll it up, everybody's okay with that. So, I wanted to give an enrollment update, obviously this past Wednesday. There's just no real two ways around it. Our numbers are down a little bit from previous years. So, and this would be better in board book, but I've got our fall 2019 count, our fall 2020 count, and then our fall of 2021 count here. Okay, so, only about 11 down from last year. Obviously, we were hoping for more to be up, so I budgeted up from that last, for this year. Matt Wood and I went through, and we kind of went through section numbers and budgeted up, but we're down 80 from the projected budget. Okay, so when we come around to an amendment, in December or January, that's going to be the target. So, if you remember, June, we passed what was really a relatively flat budget, the positive 65,000. So this is going to have a pretty drastic impact on there. I just wanted to keep everybody on. And it's primarily. And then, I haven't done this in a while, but I thought it'd be a good time to start. And that's the investment earnings update. You can see the different funds, we've got the general fund, the debt service fund, sinking fund, and then our new school bond, school building site, that's the new bond fund. If you look back at 18, I'm sorry, 1920, that's the pre-pandemic year, our earnings were, you know, substantial, really fell off the cliff last year, and, you know, we're trending kind of in that direction, but again, interest rates are what they are. So investments are following, you know, so, really in the same boat as everybody else there. Hopefully, we'll have good news. But kind of us aren't really predicting that. And that's all I have. So, if anybody has any questions, please feel free to ask.
I would just ask, alright, you know, a stupid countdown, and you pointed out, supposed to be the under grades. Do we have any? Can you explain to us why, or do we have any vision in the future, whether that's in May or May not?
Yeah, I mean, we've looked into it. It's the situations that have been going on, I think that's, that's probably. Once again, we can get past completely, and looking at those, secretaries asking somebody transfers out, the reason is, and. I think a report on that to prove this meeting, continue to change, it's pretty much across the board.
Andrew.
A lot of, I'm sorry, it's a lot of homeschool transfer hours. Yeah. They're going so. They're going so, yep, yep, and they have to provide a reason, but a lot of them, and again, I don't have the data right. Right. We can look back at that, from just me, homeschool, other counties, those type of things. Okay.
Questions, Chris?
We have levers that we plan on pulling to come in on, or what do we plan on re-actually, how do we plan?
Yeah, it's a great question. Really, you know, we were actually discussing it. This morning, last week, there are some things we could do with the SR dollars, obviously, you know, with the pandemic still being present, you know, it's good to have lower class sizes. So we can backfill with some of those SR dollars to offset that cost, because can, can supplant with those dollars, so we can use them for staff that already are with the team. That's probably our plan for now, but as we continue to move through the year, get better. Thanks.
Discussion item C, and the East Coast trip with Jenny.
Sure, and I'd love to invite her to the office and tell you as well, so that she can answer any questions you might have. We are pleased to be returning to some somewhat normalcy with an East Coast trip on the back end for this summer, for our little place, and I'm excited to hear where did you come up with the information that we're reporting about that trip? So, we have historically taken approximately 100 students each year out east, traveling to New York City, Minneapolis, Gettysburg, Washington DC. I know I visited Philadelphia. Great trip, we do a lot of the historical sites, have some fun in there as well, but a great way to, to end the eighth grade year and kind of kick off. And it is a bus trip, and they do take a bus out, they're on a bus the entire.
Will they get off of the bus? Sure. There's that bus for media.
So, any questions that you might have about that trip, I know that it belonged in each appearance in your spring, and probably even many of your children went on that trip and experienced the fun of the history and independence of being on a trip with their classmates.
My two older kids both went on it, and I was so disappointed, because my son was in eighth grade last year, so he wasn't able to participate, and yeah, it is a wonderful, wonderful trip, and I can't imagine how you deal with the kids whose phones fly over the side of the boat.
There's good times. And it has been, honestly, it's been very sad to not be able to go the past two years, you know, we were kind of hoping that last year we would possibly be able to operate to the freshmen and eighth graders, and that just unfortunately happened, unfortunately, so we're hoping that kind of get back to a little, little work to see if we'll be able to.
Is he using the same travel company that we've used in the past?
It is.
So we have the experience of them, very sad. My daughters both gone, we appreciate what you're doing.
Any other questions? Alright, that will be done for action next time.
Thank you. Okay, we're at discussion item D, the Michigan Association of School Boards Delegate Assembly Representatives Selection.
Yes, so this item annually, when the MASP, the Michigan Association of School Boards gets together, they have a delegate assembly, this year's delegate assembly begins on November 11. Each district is asked to identify, each Board of Education is asked to identify a delegate and a representative who can stand in for the delegate, in the event that the delegate cannot participate in the assembly. And so we need a primary delegate to stand in, represent Cedar Springs Public Schools, and then we also need a secondary delegate to be named by the board this evening.
And we have volunteering for delegate Tracy, and Mr. Pat's volunteer to be alternate. Is there anyone that would like to vote them? Alright, thank you for that. It's definitely on for action later tonight, so we can submit that. And then, Tracy, you need to, you have registered yet, she's registered.
Do they send us accurate information, usually the shorter this, the better we do, so we get a chance to.
Want to talk a bit, no?
Yeah. And I'm assuming.
Correct.
Yep.
Usually, well.
Big conference to put together.
That'll be on for action tonight. And we have discussion item E, the 2122 Parent Advisor for Special Education, Peace Representative, Stacy is going to tell us about that.
Every two years, I come forward and say, we need another member for paid, she's the parent advisor for special ed for the Kent ISD. So it may meet monthly, and it's a two-year term, so we are going to sit in the bathroom for a renomination, she served two years before, she'd like to serve again. So that's a cool new action. Any questions?
We don't just get one representative, right? We get three, two are already in there, in the middle of the two-year term. This one is the renomination. Thank you, that's our floor. Action tonight as well. Okay, that brings us to discussion item F, the Kent Intermediate Superintendent's Association Transparency Update. And tonight, we'll be discussing the state of the Kent ISD, and the void information regarding mask mandates from the beginning of the school year, and walking through that timeline, and void emails, and Scott's going to be explaining the rest of the story.
Thank you, I, so, in your board back, I included a packet of 25 documents that came, they were presented on the internet. A parent actually emailed them to me late last week and just said, I want to make sure that you know what's, what's being shared on the internet. The collection of documents were, came from a FOIA that a member of the community submitted to the Kent ISD specifically, Mr. Ron Taylor. And so, what I wanted to do was just talk through this packet of 25 documents, I don't know what else is out on the internet, but we can at least speak to these specific items. So really, this, this primarily comes from a concern around a document that Dr. London shared on August 13. And in the packet, that starts on page three of the, of the bundle. So specifically, for us, the Kent Intermediate Superintendent's Association, which is an association made up of the superintendents from Kent County, had a meeting on August 13 at 9:00 AM. And we were not aware that Dr. London was going to be issuing this statement. And so, when we heard of this statement, and then actually had an opportunity to read the statement, we were frustrated, I think, to put it mildly. Specifically, on page five in your, in your packet, at the end, from Dr. London, and I'm quoting his statement from August 13. "In conclusion, I'm not issuing a public health order mandating masks in the schools at this time. This decision is due to the reality that not all options have been exhausted to prevent the danger before us. The schools and parents have even greater power than the health department to protect children in the community in this instance. They are also better positioned to enforce such action. Under the revised school code, public schools have the responsibility to provide for the safety and welfare of pupils while attending school or a school-sponsored activity. The authority of schools was affirmed by the Michigan Board of Education earlier this week, when they approved a resolution that supports in allowing school districts to make scientifically informed decisions about whether to mandate COVID-19 masks for all students, teachers, and visitors. To be clear, the Kent County Health Department has reviewed the science, and we agree with the conclusion of the CDC, the American Academy of Pediatrics, our local hospitals, our medical advisors, and the overwhelming body of peer-reviewed literature, the use of facial coverings in the school environment has been effective at significantly limiting COVID transmission." So as a body, the Kent ISD disagreed strongly with Dr. London's position. We did not agree with the position that we held more power than the Health Department. Our position was one of allowing each individual district to make the choice. And by August 13, districts like Forest Hills, districts like East Catwood, the Wyoming districts had already made the decision to mandate masks for students. But as you can also see in the emails that were FOIA, several superintendents stepped up and said, we don't agree with this mandate, and for us, it's about choice. So, it was decided that we would craft a response letter to Dr. London. And I don't know how it's like for you and your workplaces, but if you try to get 22 people together to draft a response, that can be a rather funky thing, particularly as districts were starting school the following week. And so, a representative group made up of one superintendent from each of the four regions got together and crafted the body of a letter to issue back to, in response to Dr. London's, Dr. London's statement. And in a nutshell, we said, you're wrong, Dr. London. We do not have the level of authority that the Public Health Department has in terms of issuing a mask mandate. If you want a mask mandate, and you feel, in your professional judgment, that the circumstances are so dire that we need to take this action, then you need to issue a mask mandate. Nowhere did we ever say, Dr. London, it's so bad in our schools, please issue a mask mandate. That was not what we want. To be clear, that is not what we wanted. We wanted the opportunity to make choices. So our response to Dr. London was simply to say, you're wrong, respect it. If it's so bad in your professional opinion that a mask mandate needs to be issued, then you need to do that. Because if we try to do it at the local level, it will not be successful. We don't have the power that you assume that we have. So that was really the, the body of work that led up to the drafting of that letter, that response to Dr. London. And I agreed with that position, and that's why I added my signature to the letter. That's it. So, there was another issue that raised some, some concern on the part of individuals in social media. There was a statement that Dr., or that Ron Taylor shared, he sent an email out to the Kent Intermediate Superintendents with the subject item, Alleghan and Kalamazoo County HD Health Department issues a mandate, and then there's a link to a WoodTV8 story. My response to that email from Ron Taylor was, oh boy, if the Kent County Health Department follows suit, will you have any openings at the Kent ISD for me after I'm fired from Cedar Springs? And clean the tar and feathers off my skin, of course. So, basically, that was a joke. The email was, you know, my community is not going to be happy, many communities in Kent County are not going to be happy. And the tar and feathers point was referencing an age-old practice of public officials, when they make unpopular decisions, community members will dip them or pour hot sap all over their bodies and throw feathers in it. So, I don't quite understand why that was such a high point of individuals, but that's really all that was as well. It was an attempt at some, in a pretty stressful situation. So, are there questions or wonders that you have about anything that's transpired so far? We are firmly positioned, I firmly believe that districts should have the opportunity to make a choice. And if the Health Department feels, they're, they're the professionals, we're not health professionals, they're the experts. Just like I wouldn't want a Health Department official coming in and telling us what reading curriculum we should teach, or what math curriculum we should teach, that's their lane, and we expect them to guide our practice on matters of public health.
So, to clarify too, as we discussed before, when I spoke at the Kent County Commissioners' meeting, it was not an opposition of stock, but it was higher level board. So to clarify too, as we discussed before, when I spoke at the Kent County Commissioner's meeting, it was not in opposition of Scott, but it was higher local board. Scott had helped in suggesting the MTSS, the multi-tiered systems of support piece that I had in my speech, because that was how we had planned to start school, using the least restrictive supports and see how we could launch off the school year and how we could do it. This board has been asked repeatedly at public comments what we were doing. And, and we were being told that we, as a board, weren't doing enough. And we were constantly reminded that we were worth the people. So I was doing more work by attending the Kent County Commissioner meeting and speaking there. By stepping out and, and speaking there, there's been intuitions that there's a rift between Scott and the Board of Education. There is not. I also had talked to Roger Morgan personally, our Kent County Commissioner, on the phone earlier that week. And I wanted him to hear from our district formally during that public comment. Kent County Health Department became less collaborative and was pushing mandates on the schools without a public health order. They wanted to shape the schools into doing what they wanted. Scott was prepared and confident to start school, but as the other counties fell to mandates, it became apparent that what was going to happen in Kent County. And the parents were going to lose their choice for their children. Regarding the Kent ISD and Ron Taylor, Misty and I went to meet with Ron Taylor as Higher Board of Education work and also out of a plea from the public comments at our board meetings as well. And I had concerns regarding Ron Taylor's work in previous special education education and my previous board work. Ron Taylor was what I noticed, they are our kids, not his or Kent ISDs or Kent Counties. We want local control and parent choice. It's not grandeur that's public because they're the biggest choice. And it's not even a superintendent vote would be the best way to handle it. We're in education and we can use data. And we can, just like with differentiated teaching, we can use different strategies because all of our districts were, are different. And like I know that very clearly. Multi-tiered systems of support can get us started. They could have made us to get started, so we can get. It's concerning that Ron Taylor could advocate however he personally wanted as a point of, he needed to hear our Board of Education's voice. Misty explained quite plainly also how the trust we had worked so hard to get was crushed with that Kent County Public Health Order. And Ron Taylor needed to hear that from the Board of Education. We reminded Ron Taylor that we are elected and he is not. The good news out of all this mess is we, we are working with the other Northeast Kent County Districts, Board of Education, and we're sharing more information and staying in touch with each other on issues such as critical race theory and other mandates. It's going to take all of us working together on the same page to restore local control and parent choice.
We were not anticipating any mandate from Dr. London. When we shared our response, we, because other districts were already making choices as they saw the need to make choices to require masks. And so when that came across as a blanket Kent County position, we were shocked. We, it would have been much easier for us, I could have easily launched, if we had parents that wanted masks, it would have been easy for us to shuffle class lists and make, make mask groups and make unmasked groups. That would have been an easy thing to do. That would have been an easy MTSS approach, a multi-tiered system of approach, to provide opportunity for families to get the experience that they're looking for. But we didn't have that option. And so you've got to, you've got to sometimes play the cards that you get. And so that's what we need to do.
Do you feel like the letter was misinterpreted by Adam?
Which letter?
From the superintendent. Because it looks like when I read the first statement, you know, his position was kind of let the schools decide.
Yeah.
And then he received that letter and his position changed. There may have been other variables as well, but his position changed. So if it wasn't the intent, I get that. But it feels like maybe there's not been a clarity that, you know, that wasn't our intent, because it feels like maybe it's misreceived. I mean, maybe.
I can't speak to how Dr. London received that letter. The sentence was very clear. We don't have the power to issue a mandate. If in your professional judgment, circumstances are so dire that our kids need to be wearing face masks, then you need to issue that. Then you need to issue a mandate. So.
I understand, I understand. I just, I just wonder if maybe there's an opportunity to say, you know, for our district, we don't believe that the situation is so bad. I'd like parents to be able to have local control and maybe submit a additional.
Well, we have it on public record. If you listen to the public comment.
Yeah.
Which, yeah. Yeah, which he did write in love for some of the public comments. So that's where I just, I just wonder if maybe there's that, oh, the district-specific letter or how you feel about that.
Yeah, I mean, we've been consistent. I can try again, but we've been very consistent that, you know, for us, we should be able to make choices. I mean, we did last spring. There were times last spring when the Kent County Health Department made recommendations. And we said, you know what, based on our numbers, thank you, but we're going to keep our kids in sector. And continue to have in-person. So. It has been a, you know.
Just back, I, I was just going to say, I could, I could understand Trent's point of just, it could be, could it be possible that actually pushed him? You know, taken, it's a subtlety, but could that have pushed him? Yeah, I, I wonder, I wonder that too, reading it because.
Well, and ask me now, this is book, I mean, who are we kidding? The different things that have happened with the other, you know, the latest budget. Bar, not law, and the different companies that have sent their mask mandates. He was on your great question.
Were there any superintendents who didn't, who did feel that they could handle it on a local level of the, of the 22? Did they all sign the letter?
I believe 2022 signed the letter. I don't know why the other two didn't. But I think the districts that wanted to put a mandate in place, put a mandate in place. The rest of us didn't want a mandate, so we didn't put one in place. Yeah.
Okay. Well, we thought, so we don't track educational work. We wanted to put this out there, so we can keep going as we are. We only had outbreak in high school, staff didn't mask. So they could, the concern was for absenteeism. The students were not masked through the outbreak and didn't manage to traverse through that quite well. So that, thank you for that work. That was a lot of conversations with the health department. So that work is going to continue as we keep going.
Going down.
They're going down, yes. We're no longer at the top of the list in terms of cases per 100,000. We're fourth place now. Right. Sparta is at the top of the list now. They're at like 525, followed by Concert Park, followed by Kent City, followed by Cedar Springs. I think we have 435 cases per 100,000 residents.
And I think not here, but first place.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. All right, that brings us to a portion of our need for public comments. And as we've had time, if anyone would like to address the board for their three minutes. Listen to your input and we won't be answering back this time, so don't be offended. There'll be a bit of follow-up process.
Mr. John Nix is the first person to come in.
I'd like to, well, that's.
Not your option.
Not my option?
Nope.
Is that for Rob's schools or open media action or statute, but it's not my option?
Yeah, you're the list, you're at the top of the list.
I actually seem to want to stick with one. I'm not going to argue, I'm sure you're open.
John, if you'd like to, it's, it's your turn to pick who would like your three minutes or who would like to reply your three minutes.
So the emails that you guys received, you're actually fine with with, I'll admit it. I don't think you guys read the emails, because there's a lot of, clearly, they have carefully crafted email from the 20th to 21st of superintendents with his signature of Scott's letter. Clearly chose the mask. Here's my. I don't know if you guys seen the letter or not. Down in the middle paragraph it says, "Clearly, we ask you to issue order regarding the masks in Everglades." Are you serious? Read it. It, it's right there. And Scott, I'll respect your signature on it. I think you said the word is not sneaky, I don't mean that. They can review it. You signed the letter and you said that you were not supportive of it. That letter supports it. You failed here, the children, young kids. I mean, come on. You know, 20 of you have acted outside of social duty. I'd love to see your medical license. Can you produce it? You don't have to do it. So, or, here's what I see. Either you guys fail for giving me by not keeping your superintendent in mind, or you see that probably all that. It's clear as that. These, I have FOIA, I gave them 200 dollars for emails. You guys should go look for his computer for free. Do your job. Really, nothing else to say, you know, speaking himself. You guys are taking offense.
Carol P. from Plainfield Township.
I'd like to start, I say, "The Bible is the oldest history book in the world, first written in 1000 B.C. Our country was founded on principles from the Bible. And because of this, God is most very powerful in the world than any other in the world. But when you take God out of the picture, you have chaos. And that's exactly what's happening in our country right now. If you eliminate God, you eliminate freedom. And without freedom, you have socialism and communism. According to the 2016 mill agenda, there are eight things keeping us away from God and to socialism. Number one, no more, no more prayer in schools. Two, the discredit of a family as an institution. Three, schools being used as transition routes for socialism. And the control of teachers' feelings and school boards. Four, the elimination of laws that govern obscenity. Five, the promotion of pornography and watch motion pictures on TV. And most recently, the pedophilia. Since unethical sexual behavior being designated unlawful. Seven, complete control over the plastic, radio, TV, and motion pictures. And eight, the discredit of the Bible. I don't know about you, but I think God has something to be mad about. The Bible says in 2nd Proverbs 7:14, "If my people who are called by my name will humble themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then I will hear your pardon and I will forgive the sin and heal the lamb." Please join me in praying for our children and our country. Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight with concerns for our children, our schools, and our country. We thank you for our public power to go to this nation on your word. We thank you for your many lessons that have resulted because of us. We ask that you protect our children from the evil that is being pushed upon them from malates and the teaching of CRT in our schools. We ask that you guide the teachers here and around our country to do what's best for the children. Give them courage to stand up for what is good and right rather than the image of evil ideologies. Lord, we ask that you protect the families here as they fight for the children. We pray for courage and strength as we come upon the many issues facing our country. Holy Spirit, come upon us all and open our hearts to the, to accept the love offered by your son, Jesus. Open the eyes of those who don't fully understand what is happening in our country. Show them, show them the truth and expose the evil that is happening in our schools and all over the world. Lord, please humble this school board here tonight. Give them wisdom and discernment as they make decisions affecting children and families in this school district. Show them the truth that something hurts to do your will. Lord, forgive the people of this beautiful country. Forgive us with strength and with your perfect grace. God, we the universe of our, bring our nation back to where it has served, to your word being at the center of all that we do. This is my prayer in Jesus' name, amen.
Julie Kaiser.
First, I just want to let you know that I appreciate you responding to my email to be on the other side. I didn't even email that, thank you for that. I'm sure that the community would love to know more about communications between Scott and superintendents. We touched on this. Here's the emails from August, if anybody wants to see them, I can get them to you. Let's see. I really just want you to know that I totally appreciate the lack of transparency. Thank you for trying tonight with us, although you keep telling us that you hear us and you're on our side. So here is why we're having a communication between Ron Fuller at ISD along with Scott, the other superintendent, Kent County School District. It was very disappointing and disturbing to read all of these considering you hear us. Are you doing everything that you ensure we're doing, excuse me? And are you doing everything that you intend to ensure parents have a choice? With that being said, if Scott acted on his own to be seen and put the board in a bad position, or he all worked on this together. At this point, from what I've read, I'm leaning towards Scott failing to see. As a parent, I'd love to know why my children, well, not mine, I quote my kids, have a mask on, because this is with the child abuse. However, the rest of the children are being masked in the direction of Scott and others' superintendents. I was not aware of any other administrator in the building having called for a mandate that doesn't have a license. So thank you. These emails show the short, begging the health department to have a mandate. So let's get to it. Article 13, Adam's letter to local county superintendent stating he will not issue the mask mandate order because the authority lies on the parents of the schools. This did not set well with the superintendents in Kent County. Members of Kent ISD requested that they're carefully craft a letter before, likely asking Adam to issue a mandate. For fear of losing control, losing control of the schools and if you not follow the masking guidelines. Ron Fuller, the new superintendent at ISD, sent a letter on the 17th of August, the end of November, on behalf of 2020. Thank you for Scott for signing that. We appreciate you being one of those 20. Scott's been here in this email, but it shows he wanted his signature on the letter. As we know, we have one issue, the issue at work on the 20th for masks. I didn't even smoke at Kent County District, excuse me, skating, skating in Cedar Springs. This, the whole Kent ISD does not see for Cedar Springs. Thank you, that was appreciated, I hate it. This clearly shows that you, Scott and Ivan are not on the same page. That's kind of an issue. So many questions. Who's lying about not wearing masks on our children? Why doesn't appear the board does not support the mask number children, but our superintendent does? Through the emails I gathered here in the 27th of August, two of our board members went to smoke at Ron at ISD requesting, excuse me, that requesting who signed the letters and who was in attendance. I don't know, because we haven't got the emails. I'm here today to call for Scott's resignation on behalf of acting without the board. I would also like to deeply question and set an open forum to question since you wouldn't let me on the internet. With that being said, I also request that I have the information from the lady board for the bonds held by Setside as I directed to the staff, yes, I was directed by the staff at Setside. Chris, I know that you're very aware of what this is. You seem really confused about it, but I know you know exactly what we're talking about right now. Goodness, the conversation's completely ridiculous. I look forward to your response.
Time is explaining.
I expect it by Friday, as I think you put the deadline on this, that you guys don't see that with the X's and E's. So at least I have a timeframe of when to get back to you and check in. If anyone would like your emails, please see me afterwards, I have, you know, I have this other thing I have with the other.
Carol W. K. from Plainfield Township.
Hi, my name is Carol. I'm from Plainfield Township. There is a four friend team. Correcting a mandate that goes down on all the schools and it's, you know, all of a sudden pushback exists it, but we're really not. Very concerned. I'm disappointed. What parents are seeing happening, pushing God into the background, blocking the education system, really wanting to desert the economy. China China, wanting to cheat and have a real purpose of the education, which is social education. Seeing parents' school boards need transparency, I mean, maybe the truth. Actually answer parents' questions. Most of what we heard in a lot of school board meetings is that these parents don't get anything back via email, phone calls, of course not, at these meetings, which would actually make the ability to answer their questions. You can't do it where everyone's together. Parents think this is what decisions should be for may concerning their children, but she won't take questions or talk to them about their concerns as decisions they want to make. This would be the best time to engage when they're together, it seems. This is still the United States of America. God shed His grace on us from the public. The founding fathers rightfully asked us, so we give you a freedom that need with it. The thousands of the dying of all freedoms on our crossroads along with us. We're here to push back against what this Biden administration is running down our throats. Educational and psychiatric long term, but now it's a new goal. We as a nation are done. Our lesson form, the citizens in history, Evans lessons, the advocate for sports, litter, teen, and more critically literate than ever. When we fall like sheep when driven by fear mongers, which are a raven. Which leads to lead to this virus. We as a people have become deeply complacent for our own freedoms with the information about our own freedoms. As U.S. citizens, freedom comes from God, not government. My poor parents are being brainwashed, lied to, coerced and bullied. And this is their school. The schools are the source of these as well as our own government. This is the current state of this country because what they have been taught and grown up in church is being subverted and aligned, and this is by deliberate design, following a pattern that was so successfully instituted by Stalin and Hitler. Take a look at history. It will repeat itself and it is. With this current direction that educational and healthcare systems continue, are on continuing, my parents and their parents who exist in Congress. Socialism, that being this common rule, mandates for self-help vaccines, life forms. It's illegal. No more law has been passed. Then you would have to see mandates can't last forever. You would have to declare emergency. An immigrant population is easily controlled. Are we being provided with preventative measures against this virus if we immediately occupy and plenty of information on prevention? Did only stay healthy, provide easy access to treatment, inexpensive meds to treat? No, we have mask mandates for until separate canceled at CRT L, which you ask whatever. Brainwashing continues. This is the use of our kids' legal power. And this, it might try to turn the people, like administration, help them and fast track and dismantle this whole thing. Thank you.
Well. Number one, I have a question for Mr. Go. Why don't you briefly tell us why the kids dropped out of school? Well, no, it was because of the masks that very large percentage. And it's going to keep happening because this is going to be our goal. If you guys keep the mask mandate going, we will do all we can to provide people with the opportunity to get out of school. In fairness, so it goes, then you're exactly right. It's a political game. That's all it is. You know, there has not been a vaccine scandal. Not even one tip. Nobody wants to get the mobile free strikes for presenting a sample of COVID. It is still a mystery disease. Okay, well, polio is a mystery disease. Turns out it was caused by DDP. This was found in the vaccine, last vaccine or product. Okay. At that point in time, when vaccines came out, they told the doctors, they didn't have a mandate. They could not no longer use the term polio. They had to use other terms. Okay. I don't know if you guys knew that. There there is no, there is no polio. Okay, you haven't figured it out yet? It's just a flu. That's all it is. Okay. Amplified by our hospital's experiment with getting money. And speaking of getting money, what do we get? What do we get for adding a mask mandate here? Are we getting money? I don't know. It sure seemed like it. I don't. I also want to know why another little bit of crap. So, I don't. Let's just forget it. I know I'm scratching for the web.
I have full seizure prepared because I used to read the way emails and I have a completely different perspective. I'm sure that tonight in that place, you may be wanting to cry. I come to all of you and I'm in the middle of times of my whole personal story. I asked my mother, can I be back? Don't make any deliberation. You don't consider my concerns on my children or anybody else. And always Norway all the time. So I asked you several times to stick up for us. You just want to stick your letter and you fight just and you say words. Today. Why are you lying? And why are you sharing your information if you know that you all asked Adam to make that meeting? And you frustrating me, young lady, because my children were on the line. You fucked my children. It's a way of danger for you even to have your own death and it's a bullshit crap. And it's a Bible. It says, you have a problem with somebody that you're taking to them. I'm taking it to you to the back. Many guys change your ways and I do want you to resign. Because you lie and you don't tell the truth in the person in your position. You have a tendency. You need to have this. You need to have this. You need to love these kids like their parents love them. And you should know that we have freedoms and rights. And you do know you're just dumb on an accurate debt. And you make me so damn mad. Please step down and more, you should be considering letting them go. I don't understand what you want to be thinking of. You all frustrating me.
Casey Dryer.
Hi, Casey Dryer. Last meeting I had Joe that I filed the record for those five kids in age of 12 as a school. And two of which were part of mask mandate. Can I argue that unfortunately, I expressed my frustration in the board that I took this waiver. That was denied. And I was given two options, remember Scott? One, either comply, or two, excuse that for shit at all. So my two kids are in private school right now. At the private school, they had a little school, was a new parents meeting. He said during the parents meeting, he said, hey, this is Kent County Health or Kent County. It applies to us. But you know what? I believe parents know what's best for their children. So we're no other parents to choose for a mask or kids or not. Possibly in the health department to come lock front doors. It says a goal, so that the health department comes, locks doors, parents do not need to worry. I peace the back door of school and take and go. I find it amazing. They actually asked, Chris, why is a woman in K-36? You kidding me? You think it's true for a kindergarten to try to watch a teacher pronounce A, I, I with a mask on? Well, we're sitting there, we've got our mask. Unbelievable. But you know, let's let's follow, let's follow the health department's laws, right? Because, you know, Scott, you said it. We want to power at the local level, but let's send a, let's send an email that says, we don't have the power at the local level. Why don't you send an email that says, we got it, Adam, we take care of it? And then listen to the parents. You know, two times as many people die in county parks as the COVID. Right? Fodding of arteries, right? Obesity, lack of exercise. Right? They add a chip, put on a mandate, says teachers book, sugar in their, in their lunches. Compensation daddy snacks. You know, I I'm actually, I bet you if they knew we would comply. Because that's what we do. We comply. Right? So let's let's take this to another, let's talk about counseling some. Right? We we heard from the seniors here and the junior members and others, we had a big school assembly. Right? A school assembly for a grade. Right? They eat together in the classrooms. They're all, are they eating together in the lunchroom or all the ways together? Yeah, it comes with a dance. I don't know. Never decide. Let's comply. Thank God we have great weather. Because I bet this place would be packed if we didn't. Unbelievable. But you know, that's that's common sense. It makes about as much common sense as putting COVID patients in nursing homes. So I ask you to break it up and stand up for us right now.
Beth, right? Razan? Beth Razan?
Yeah. Got it. All right. Here I go again. I'm not going to go for everything. Everybody knows everything. We're editing on this. We all have a chance to turn and make a difference and keep our country, keep our kids safe. Do what's right. I will not. I just, I just now made it for the day. Because I see a, a video that a lady posted on YAP. She jumps out the news that they want a divorce. Her kids is not at her school with the mask on. And I would say, this is child abuse. I get my walk down across the path with a mom with a mask on. One year old, two year old in the car. And the thing is that me, the stranger, because I'm wearing a mask. It's connected emotionally to me smiling, sticking a smile out. Not mom with a total stranger. That's not right. Mom should know more in that whole situation. Apparently, this woman went and smiled and took a pic. Is that your thing? So. There was something there. I think that the school's not right. It's just the school works. Okay, it's a good word. Then they can't be. Yeah, why? Right now, we're both, we want to stop. That's a child. It's weird. It's not about. I can't wait till I can tell my son, he can come back to school. Breathe, live and breathe.
Good evening. I think it would be kind of weird to come, thank you for comments, except during the competition backwards to do it, okay? Can't make the discussion time afterwards, but I'm going to jump forward a little bit and I can assume names now that the budget passed. And which in the budget includes that it's flawed and the local parents can't handle. So assuming that the school's lawyers have said we're still under the the health department and it's not extending that master. So I guess I would encourage you to get some second name or third name for the same. Someone who's not, not going to say, oh, yeah, a local parent hasn't been sent the other. I guess it's not a capital doc, but I think that the lawyer would be able to say, hey, that's what the law is. And I said, just like the health department did, and said, the COVID protocol, 2453, it's Michigan law. And you're going to have to go home. I have an office, it's not a law, Michigan law. So what's Michigan law right now? So I'm going to jump forward again with this, and then we can have a conversation later and talk about how your lawyers have said, no, can you? But I encourage you to keep seeking information. Want to back up us a little bit. About four years ago, I started realizing that there were some discrepancies within the Michigan law regarding public health and the health department. And what I learned, you know, it's, you know, the deep and wide that the health department, there are discrepancies within the Michigan law, first of all, regarding health, the preference issue. There are also ways that the health department can circumvent legislation. And I knew about 2453 and 253, I brought two representatives, board of it. It said, hey, this is going to be problematic. I don't think that's a good idea. There are some laws that that are on those, we take them with that, there's about a term that there have been a handful of cases that have not passed. That would, that would pull in the reins of the health department. Because they have actually had a lot of control before this COVID thing. It's actually been set up over the years. So. You know, I, the way I look at it is that our adversary is not with you. And it should not be because I think a lot, a lot of you are on our side and want to be free of this. So I see it as the health department is is the bad guy. And we have known for a very long time. So I would even also urge the public to take note of that tonight. Because we are very important to think that we do not keep wanting to be the type of people who want to also be free of the criminal work of the health department. The health department is the bad guy.
Danielle Scott.
Hello, everyone. There's many stuff we need to share with you. Last time I saw it working was the first week school. If you recall, I guess our data supporting that section would improve that they cause more of a harm. I received a very, they emailed from the staff stating that many questions raised by audio members were addressed during the bleeding portion of the meeting. I guess I just had a very good response to this one there. My five year old has been sick three times since I started school 49 days ago. Surprise, surprise. I continue to be filled with disgust with these, these virtually useless pieces of bed for our children. They're being forced to stuff, giving me another reason. I'll be honest, I sat caring, just brought down my cloth mask to some of my children in the day. Which is perfect. Some of the schools were worn, the school supplies were white and colored. I can clearly see every shade of the new business while I retract it and surface already. No one else should resist. As I mentioned before, we can address that in there, that we're nice for the day. And I just had a very civil question to ask, the efficacy of mask. The necessity of proper usage of masks isn't unachievable. The school provides my children with one single soulful mask every day, a home from a new school status, not intentional protest. The greater majority of adults don't know how to properly wear a mask, and the whole of possession is not a kind of rules. We're forcing, when you're forcing an insanity regarding. regardless of what the dog and hole can come up with, it says, we all almost throwing those strings. Furthermore, I have another concern. I don't have that against masks. But I want to bring up something that I want to be addressed. I want to know who's there, who reason who she is and why she said it is. For anyone not familiar with the circulating, most of the teachers on social media who are allowed to teach CRT in some way, she performed. Even if you go against the curriculum. I don't know who this woman thinks she is. I know why she said it. My children will not be able to be on or talk with this change of the board occasion. I don't know what I've learned as they can manage this. It's a common experience. What I think is even more, why does that mean? The principal is secreted to every elementary school. I think it's okay to sign their emails or pronouns. Is this the kind of crap we're willing? You should be ashamed of yourself. Your staff's personal beliefs have zero place in the classroom. They have supposed to be teaching my children math, reading, writing. It is my job to expose my children to those things. When they're, it is up to me to help my children start themselves in a way that they be. Your staff members are way more secondhand. I want to know what the caution and guidance is. From a place to attack my babies from the road. Do you respect my babies and my victims? Then you need to prove it to me because you're not sure what it is. Thank you.
Angelah.
Hi. I'm gonna give you a little jump. I just think so much that we've already done. So much. The first thing I did want to start with, before I start, go from office seat. Third line in regards to the university of state. While we expect that our parents and staff members will follow the guidance in our professional experience that many will not cover such a direct application. COVID help order will not happen to them. And if our expert community is in immediate danger, the child will be first to ask. And schools that need to be activated, children are regarding masks for everyone and buildings with students and such. That's not the meeting that took place. Not how the conversation took place since the 10th, 13th. That's the third day. And then there's. We've all wondered why the question was. Especially when mid September after the week. Mid September, see if I had five students coming. Now, it's after school started. I could be wrong. But I want to say I can remember something of that. So why, at this point, I really don't care if it's your main service. I just want the chance. Is it because of funding? Is it because of the grant that was announced in September ninth? For the schools that are making repercussions from having a mandate? Is it because, I mean, I understand how much they think there was so much pushback. And it's already something that you have to choose. And my, just tell me really, in fact, this is a very hard question. The other things to go over. I'm really curious about where the money being obtained for, for the projects. I guess the little school. I'm assuming somewhere with the, the funds and whatnot. They have a little bit of water. Someone there. I'm just curious where that's been obtained from. The other thing is. Could we just fill you in on? The asset funds, possibly the sweeping funds? That would be really efficient. Chris, you and I, we should, or can't think of the PDA expenditure slash. So that's concerning. I want to make sure. And I'm just hoping that because of my employment and the things that I have super supervised because I'm much slower scale. And at this point, Scott, please resign. And if anybody is there, please stand up.
Angie Burden.
So if anybody cares, it's not that difficult speaking. I'd like to hear something that I can add on here. No emergency has just caused a surprise constitution. While an emergency cannot create power and no emergency just by designation of any of the provisions in United States Constitution or states constitutions hold with emergency such as automatic depression or especially liberal construction of constitutional powers has been declared that because of national emergency, it is a policy of the courts of the times of national hero. So liberally to construe the special powers vested in the chief executive as to sustain and perpetuate the purpose thereof and to them also more liberally to construe the constituted division and classification of the powers of the coordinate branches of the government and insofar as running not be clearly inconsistent with the constitution.
Thank you. That ends our public comment for this evening. And as is our, as is our policy. But between one of me and Mr. Smith, we'll be in contact with the people that spoke. We'd like to have conversations with them. So we'll move on into our action items. And our first action item is the MASP delegation of representatives. Would be Tracy first, Mr. Alternate. And I will entertain in motion.
Support.
Any discussion? Having none, Vice President Shoffner.
Yes.
Secretary Sliger.
Yes.
Treasury Gilmore.
Yes.
Justice Van Der Haai.
Yes.
Justice regard.
Yes.
Justice Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed.
Yes.
Motion carries. Our second action item is the 21, 22 parent advisor for special education base representative. And we have Sydney Metaxx volunteering and entertain in motion for that approval. So we'll support any discussion. Having none, Vice President Shoffner.
Yes.
Secretary Sliger.
Yes.
Treasury Gilmore.
Yes.
Justice Van Der Haai.
Yes.
Justice regards.
Yes.
Justice Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed.
Yes.
Motion carries. And that brings us to the communication portion of our meeting. And we have Misty, the travel to Lansing earlier last week.
Yeah, actually, on the 29, I traveled to Lansing. Those are behind the scenes. It's so, it was put on by Michigan Association of School Boards. And then we had a panel with two senators and then two representatives. And we were really, a lot of the focus was talking about the teacher shortage and that it's, it's, we're almost in a crisis with it. And even universities that have education programs have seen a huge decrease in enrollments for education. And some of what they're thinking is because students have to student teach and work 40 hours and it's kind of hard to hold a job. And then also the teaching also as a student teacher. And so they are making a way of where, if we may have funds also where we can pay student teachers. But that's something that we would have to look into. And then also looking at different ways of also like how career type centers, how we have for nursing or for different trades. Maybe also incorporating that for education. So kiddos in school, sorry, students in school can, kiddos, kiddos. But can also like do more of a tech program and get also credits towards that when they graduate. And then see if they really enjoy it before they actually start paying out the money to a university. So we have 50 or 55 schools are already doing that within the state of Michigan. So that was very interesting. I did speak up. Senator Moore was there and I did speak up and just spoke in regards of the mandate. And then we wanted control locally. And due to the health director in Kent County and everybody kind of like, ooh, that's us. And just said, we want local control. Senator Moore did say that the school districts should have control and higher ups need to respect that. And then also there was another senator that was there. She was more on the party side that kind of agrees with Washington. And she even said, she asked directly who was that director? And I didn't, I called them out. And I also explained, she said that he should be speaking to us. And I said, well, we did have a meeting, but nobody canceled at the last minute. And so he will not talk with us. She's, she was someone. So we are having follow up. I am having a follow up with those two senators. And then also with the state reps. There are also a couple of bills that we're going in. If kids are quarantined, you help count against our counts, our student counts. So that is a bill that's going through also. Then as you know, and then also the bill 567, which will create pathways for parapros that have three years of experience to help them get their, their degree in education to become teachers. So they're making it a little bit more streamlined for them, which I think is great. And then also the asset funds. And then this really focuses a lot on the teacher shortage. We are having a very, very huge issue. We don't have just not just teachers, but also bus drivers. We're the National Guard. I mean, he said the state is actually directing buses right now. So we're hoping we don't get to that point. But just so everybody understands, we are working a lot behind the scenes. And the senators and state reps are aware of that we want local control. So. A day taken off of work, I'm saying, in Lansing, fighting. So we are working as hard as we can.
So. Okay, so we then have the upcoming MASP leadership conference in November. As with any, take the information we want and the rest, you know, governor from that works for our district. And if there's ever plenty to go, we need to get registration. And if our class, she can get that in there.
I'm registered.
All right, thank you. All right, that's, that's what I, the end of what I have for presentation.
So Chris, Lee and Rob and I are working to come up with some additional solutions, both for mics as well as for visuals, so that people in the audience can see the content that's being displayed and better hear the content that's being shared in addition to you being able to see things clearly that's being displayed as well. And so we're working a couple of different scenarios and we'll hope to, you know, put those into play as quickly as possible to make a better experience for you, but also to make a better experience for the people you are attending. And we did also talk to H. He's looking to bring in the TV production students to start doing some videotaping for us, starting after the first of the year. And that will hopefully provide people watching the video of the meetings on YouTube with a better, a better experience as well.
All right, so moving on with planning. Our next meeting is October 25th. And it's a work session beginning at 6:15. And hey, there's no more business before the board. We will stand adjourned. 8:09, thank you.